All right, we'll call the Springfield Planning Commission meeting for June 3rd to order and stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we ready to call the roll, Gina?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Townsend?
Here.
Mr. Cool?
Here.
Mr. Bev?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Gregg?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Boyd?
Here.
Everyone is present at the county floor.
All right, is there a motion to approve the amendments from May 6th?
Okay.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they will stand approved. The first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. We hadn't had one in a while, so this is for the proposed preliminary PUG master plan located at 2923 Old Highway 431 South. And this is the thing where you get to voice your opinion and your viewpoints. I will ask anyone that wishes to speak to raise their hand. I'll call on you, and you need to come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, where you live. And you be addressing this group, not that group out there. And we will start off, oh, also, if you could, limit your speaking to two minutes, if that's We would start off with the people that are in favor of the PUG master plan, and is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of? Okay, I see one hand here. Now come up to this microphone. That's why they worked on that thing so long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale, 516 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm the engineer that's put this plan together. Actually, I don't think that's the most current version of the plan. There were a lot of comments that came from the planning commission that have been revised, big radiuses and turnarounds and cul-de-sacs and eyebrows and trees on every lot, and so anyway, all those plans have been resubmitted, and I think we're in good order. I appreciate your time and consideration. I think this will be a good addition for the city, and I'd say I'm speaking in support. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Dr. Kumar. Come on up here to this one. That's the camera y'all are trying to kiss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Sabi Kumar. I own this property, and my wife Linda and I, we have lived there for 30 years. We have a nice home on it, and we have used the farm in the right way. Having lived there for that long, we've reached a time in our life that we would need to downsize, and that has been difficult to do because the only mistake that we made in our life was build a house that's too big to sell. So since we were not able to sell it, we had thought that maybe we will not, but ultimately the land that we own around it is located at a very good place with widening of 431. And for that reason, it is very well suited to development, and we are agreeable. We would like to go ahead and sell the property along with the house, and we would make a very nice development where our home will be used, of course, as a clubhouse. It would be good for the community. It will be very well planned and very well controlled by a reputable organization, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But our interest is to do something that will allow us to downsize and move on to our next home in the same community, because I represent this community and I belong to the community, as well as for the property to serve the right purpose for our community so that it is a good development, keeps good housing as the growth happens. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This isn't a question and answer thing. You just sort of give your opinion to us, and then we discuss later on in the meeting.
Okay.
So if you hang around...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other? Okay, is there anybody that wants to speak against the proposal? Okay?
I'm Henry Ford. Thank you. I live at 2851 Old Highway 431 South. This proposal is east and north of my property. I'm about 30 foot off the fence in the back. I got 16 houses and lots supposedly going in right behind me. Then on the east, on the north side, there's 17 more. Me and my wife are in our winter time of our lives, and it's devastating to us. What I'm wondering is, is this a done deal, or does it make a difference if I came up here or not? Because I don't, you said I just make a statement, right?
Right.
Okay, well, I watched deer go across that ridge right on the east side. Now I'm going to just see the back of houses. I'm worried about drainage problem coming back on me. There's a lot of things that concern me. I want, I'm not the most important person around. I love the Lord, I go to church, and I don't want to be an embarrassment to my church or to my Lord. I pray for my neighbors, I do my neighbors' favors, and I just, I think you'd be better off with some nicer houses. This is making our country look cheap. And all the tax revenue comes from better houses than what's going up there. So, if I may have a chance to speak later, I appreciate the time.
Got another one against?
My name is William Salzman. I reside at 137 Brandywine Lane. I am opposed to all the high-density type construction that we've been seeing for the last 20 years in the county, because the schools are already maxed out with a 70% poverty rate, and we're going to import more poverty into the community with, in essence, lower-income housing. And it's a disservice to the low-income people we already have here when we're maxing out the services. And I know that from friends at the police department, you have a higher, you have a higher rate of calls in neighborhoods like that, because they have harder times and more difficulties to deal with right away. I would not be against more median-sized homes, the 1,500, 1,800 square foot, being put in a neighborhood like this, where it wouldn't impact Mr. Ford's home and his property value also. You know, you've got to remember, too, when you do this, it's going to affect his property value. You're also going to annex, and then he's going to have to start paying city taxes. So there's been a taking of, even though his property hasn't changed, there's a taking of his property and his values. So I think that's something that should be considered. This town has a large amount of low-income housing. We don't, we don't need just big houses, we don't need just little houses, we need a nice mix, and we don't have a nice mix right now. We need to get more median. The zoning needs to look down the road 20 years, a little more than it has been in the last 20 years. And I think, I think if you do that, it's going to make it a better community for everybody in the long run. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Is it part of the protocol I be allowed to answer some questions that were raised?
Well, we will get into that later in this, this meeting, but not in the public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to speak a word? Okay, if not, I'll call the public hearing closed, and thank everybody who did come out and participate in the process. It's always good for us to hear from folks that live in the area. We do have, before new business, we have one old business item. This came up two months ago and was deferred. It's the rezoning of CG to CS that's at Wallace Road and Highway 41 North. Is there a motion to put this on the, back on the floor for discussion?
Some who?
One on the east side there.
I'll be the second.
Okay. Okay, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple months ago, there was a petition submitted to rezone the parcel, Tax Map 69, Parcel 98, from CG to CS. At that time, we had, the planning commission had some concerns concerning the type of transient habitation that they had proposed. We had, we talked with the petitioner's design firm. They have addressed, they're going to do a brickstone facade, they're going to do interior room doors, a hotel. They are going to have a 24-hour attendant. They are going to do a continental breakfast food service. They're going to have meeting slash conference room, and they're going to provide a guest laundry service. So they have met every requirement that we have asked of them. Later in the agenda, we're going to talk about transient habitation, but this particular proposal meets everything that we're going to ask for, except it has just a few less rooms. And so, in good conscience, I feel that we, you know, the staff will recommend that you rezone it. I think that it would be a good asset to that area. People flying to the airport, it would be close for those types of people. The industry across at the North Industrial Park, they have people come in and fly in. It would give them a place closer to stay to conduct their business, and it'd give them the opportunity to have an off-site meeting at this hotel. So, with that said, the staff recommends approval.
Okay, tell them.
Devin, is this a project that was a hotel slash convenience store?
Yes.
Is that still on the?
The convenience store is still there as well. It's allowed by the zoning, the lot, the parcel would be big enough to do so.
Did we talk about the bricks? Were they going to use bricks?
Yes, they're going to use a bricks and stone facade on the outside. They're going to meet that criteria that we requested. They're going to do, like I said, foods, continental breakfast food service. They will have a 24-hour front desk attendant, so meeting room and guest laundry.
And the rooms are interior now?
Yes, sir. Interior entry to the rooms.
Bob?
The drawing, inset drawing, where is the front of the building facing? Is it going to be facing a new, a new road? It's not going to face, based on the way it looks drawn, that it's not going to face 41?
Yes, sir. This is the owner's rendering. That will be addressed through the architect at, when the time comes. This is, like, once again, his rendering. There, to my knowledge, there's not been any architectural services engaged at this point. He's just trying to give you what he thinks is, is a good representation. To very specifically answer your question, I do not know. There's no regulation to dictate how he faces his building, as long as he meets the setbacks.
How many rooms was it, Dave?
Forty-four.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
I saw Bob and Billie and both.
Let her have it.
Okay. All right, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Pass is nine zero.
All right, now, under new business, 6.1 is the PUG we just had the public hearing for. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So long. Second.
Dustin, second. Okay, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We lightly touched on this planned unit development last month. This is the preliminary planned unit development master plan submittal. They, the developers are proposing approximately 200 single-family residential homes and another 368 mixed-use multi-residential units being composed of apartments, cottages, and townhomes. The, they have submitted another proposal that does reflect the cul-de-sac on the end, a turn-around about, 26-foot roads. I apologize, I don't know why that didn't make it in here. But, you know, they're going to do it in phases, so this is the preliminary for the overall. As previously stated, it's easy to put things on a flat piece of paper. Don't know if they'll be able to keep that number going. They may lose some units as time progresses. You know, they're going to have a on-site property management for, for the homeowners' association. All of the exterior is, it, there's a 25-foot buffer that is shown all the way around. It will be a vegetative buffer, as required by the ordinance. There is, you know, our landscaping ordinance further requires more landscaping within the development itself. Each lot has a single tree. The multifamily residential will have landscaping to meet the requirements of our landscaping ordinance. It's a, it's a pretty well-thought-out development with a, like I said, most importantly, an on-site homeowners' association representative of property management. They will be living on site. If you have any questions, Mr. Dale would probably be more than willing to answer any of your questions, and possibly any of the others that are associated with this project.
Is the buffer going to be like a berm with trees?
No, sir. It'll be a vegetative buffer. Berms, berms produce in themselves drainage issues. This site, you know, the city of Springfield has a stormwater management plan. This site is, will have stormwater management, it'll have detention, it'll have stormwater quality. It will meet every requirement that is required of the state of Tennessee and the federal government. You know, it'll, it'll meet all those requirements. So it's going to have, you know, it'll have curbs, both sides of the street, sidewalks both sides of the street, underground utilities, electricity, streetlights, all of that, just like pretty much any other subdivision, except these roads, their smallest road will be 24-foot wide, where we require 22, and their widest road, this one right here that goes all the way through, this one is going to be 26 feet wide. So, you know, more than is required by our subdivision regulations, but, you know, that's what we have negotiated for the city of Springfield. The whole purpose of the planned unit development is to get the density. They have to offer a, a solid plan that's going to benefit the community and provide value to the community as well.
Where is Mr. Ford's property in reference to this map?
I am not certain. Mr. Ford, where is your property in reference to this?
This comes up to back my property on the east side.
This, right here? This property right here?
And the north side.
So this side and this side. So this is your property right here?
Can I come on?
Yes, please.
Turn it around, please.
Yes, sir. This is, is this your property right here? This is Highway 431?
Yeah, this, this is my house here, and my shop, and this is a lake, and this is another pond right above it. So I'm about 25 foot, excuse me, probably 40 foot, I don't know, I didn't measure it, but I think it's supposed to be at least 20 foot out of line. Is that not right?
I do not know what the county's regulations are.
Anyhow, that's my house right there, and I built back there because I didn't want to be, in the beginning, I started about 30 years ago, and I didn't want to have somebody building plots to me. And that's a joke, but anyhow, I go out to here, and up to Bridges Road, which is not showing all of it.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Bass is almost there.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Bob, did you have a question for Dr. Kumar?
Dr. Kumar, my question to you was going to be, are you planning on living inside the development?
No, sir. We have purchased land in, a lot in the community to build a house, home on.
That's all. Just was curious to know whether or not you would live on your farm.
I'd like somebody to come up and explain to me what a cottage is. A cottage to me and a cottage that they're proposing may be completely opposite.
Thank you very much, again. Generally, a cottage development is one per, it's not on an individual lot. So it'd be like a horizontal property regime, but they're individual homes, they're not attached. And so that's generally what we'd call cottage. So it would appear just like another single-family home, except it would be on one large parcel of land with an association.
Are we speaking very small, or what?
They don't have to be that small. I think the average, the smallest size house you're going to get in here is probably about 1,400 square feet. So although, it's a cottage style, maybe, would be more, I know cottage sounds like small. It doesn't necessarily mean small. It's more architecture, probably, a little bit, something that's built to conform with the topography. This is a very unique part of the property, you know, closer to the country and closer to the tributary down below. So they would be designed to look very open, but they're not on individual lots.
Do you have an average size of your single-family homes?
I think the average is between 1,400 and 1,600. Is that about right, Tim? And the average, the, the starting price for these is about $300,000, is that correct? So, so these are not low-end homes. These are moderately priced houses. You know, developing a subdivision like this, it's, there's a lot of infrastructure and all that cost goes into the house itself. Large empty spaces, like had been mentioned, sidewalks both sides of the street, wider roads, turnarounds. As a matter of fact, on the main collector's street that goes through here, there's a big turnaround to slow traffic down. And so, a lot of thought's been gone into this, based upon a lot of your input that you gave us, which is really valuable. I hope that answered your question.
As far as apartments, are we talking like townhomes?
No, this, I think this would be typical, I guess what you'd call stacked, flat apartments, like a garden-style apartment, maybe, you know, multiple layers, two or three stories high. So there would be just a typical apartment size. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be townhouses. There is a townhouse component in this plan. These are townhouses here, 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 and here. So this development's designed to have a lot of different variety of housing. So you've got the cottages, the townhouses. Well, I guess you would actually start with apartments first. Maybe a cottage would be second, or a townhouse third, and then, and then a single-family home would be fourth, as far as the tier is concerned. So someone could come in here, live in an apartment, move into something larger if they wanted to, which I think would be encouraged in this development. There may even be a program within this development to encourage that. It's a pretty well-thought-out plan. It provides a lot of mixture of housing types, and I think it'd be something that'd be really good for you.
You said something about a program. What were we referring to?
Well, I'm sure that, you know, these, and I don't know this particularly, I do a lot of, I represent a lot of people all over middle Tennessee. Probably the majority of the projects that I represent are in Davidson County. I'm a former council member myself, so I've sat on boards and commissions just like you have, and it's a labor of love. I know you don't get paid very well, right? But a lot of times when you have a development like this, there's a program put together within this association to encourage people to continue to live there. And so, there's just, there may be an incentive, actually, to allow them to move from one type of a home to another type of a home. And I think that's something that they may set up, but I can't be really articulate about it. But that's generally how it would work.
And you're looking to put how many houses in that particular area?
If you look at all the units, there'd be 200 houses, and then about 360 or so mixture of multifamily units. Cottages would be considered multifamily, although they're individual houses. Generally, if you have multiple homes on one lot, it's considered a multifamily. I don't know why, but it just generally is. And then you have townhouses, and then you'd have the apartments as well. This meets, based upon the zoning criteria, this falls within the parameters of density. So we're not exceeding any density that's, that's based upon the land use policy or the, or the zoning. So it falls within that, which I think is around five units per acre, or something like that. Pardon me?
Five, six, eight.
Okay. But when you divide it by the total acreage, it's, it's a little over five units per acre, which is allowed based upon your regulations. That, yes, sir.
Mr. Ford seems really concerned about the lines. Is there any way possible to give him a little bit more breathing room, or his home that's located?
There should be a lot of flexibility, you know, within the plan itself. I don't know if I want to, my client could, you know, probably would speak better to that than I could. I could. Those lots, I believe, are deeper. I designed those lots to be deeper, although they have a 20 or 25-foot buffer on the rear of those lots. They're already deeper lots. And that's something that I think could be incorporated, provide him. So if you look at where the property line is and the buffer, well, the houses are well beyond that, too. So the distances between his house and any homes can be significant. Also, any vegetation, although there's going to be a, a buffer there, there should be a natural tree row there. There'd be no reason to take any of those existing trees out. Keep the vegetation as much as possible, and keep the vegetation along those lots as much as possible to, to provide him that separation visually. I think actually adding more distance probably doesn't accomplish as much as making sure that you keep that canopy there. So I can work, we can work with the staff on that and make sure that, that there's a, there's a good vegetative buffer there. Let me look at this just a second.
Hey, David.
It's gone.
Can you pull that back up?
Yeah, it's gone.
Here's property that I have to say what else.
I just want to look at the contours real quick. So I think what's happening here is that this is at a, this is at a top, like a high point. And so his property actually falls down, and it's significantly lower. So not only would he be looking into a vegetated barrier, he would be below it as well. And I think that's going to provide a lot of, a lot of separation as well. He's not looking up, down into it. He's going to be down below. And these houses will be up and beyond and maybe even over. That spot right there is a high spot. So when, once you get over there, it starts falling off in the other direction. So I don't think there's going to be a lot that he's going to see there.
Could I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sir.
What kind of vegetation are you talking about?
Is there an area on?
Mr. Ford, to answer your question very specifically, there's a, a tree requirement. So there will be trees installed. He also, they're going to do their very best to maintain the existing trees and the existing buffer there. They're not going to come in and tear that out. So, you know, they want to enhance it so that you won't be able to see the, the properties that will be along your property lines.
I've got a bunch of questions. I don't get to ask.
I'll, I'll be more than happy to stay here. I'll meet with him outside. I can, I can try to answer all the questions that he has. So I'll do that after, after y'all are through to see if I can make sure that his questions are answered. Yes, sir?
I know Dr. Kumar's house is a big house, but we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 to 2,000 people. You got plans for a second clubhouse, or?
That's probably beyond my pay scale. I'm sure that there are requirements, like a pool, for instance. It would have to be certain standards or certain requirements as far as size is concerned. And I'm sure that that's also going to be the same as far as any community meeting space. And so if there's a large group of people here that dictates them to do a larger facility, then they'll have to do that. I know the pool would be absolutely one of those scenarios.
Mr. Ford, what is the address of your property?
2851 O.
They're pulling you up over here?
Yeah, we're.
Now, how many roads would be in that particular subdivision?
I'm just going to count them, okay?
Okay.
So this is the main collector, and this is actually designed so not one driveway from any house goes onto that road. I wanted to keep it unobstructed. Now, there'll be an entrance to the multifamily, or there'll be a road, a public road that connects to it, but no other connections. So that's what something we did to, to make it very safe. So that's the main road. You'll have road, this road number two, road number three, four, five, and six. And then I guess you could consider the road for the cottage to be number seven. There's a lot of grade difference on this side. So it's going to require some pretty big open space. And as the planning commission director mentioned before, when you're laying this out, you're probably going to lose some units because of the grades. And so a lot of that's going to wind up to be open space.
And it is conducive to emergency vehicles and all these type of things that come into there?
Yes, ma'am. So, so it has two main points of access. The fire marshal will not allow you to develop any piece of property that probably had over, I think it's 199 units without two points of access. You could sprinkle buildings up to 199. Generally, you don't want to have more than 49 on a single dead-end street. So this has two points of access, and it's also designed to connect to other properties in the future in case someone wants to, you know, develop their properties, they'll have access to this, to this subdivision as well. So it's got future connectivity, and it also has good circulation and has adequate safety as far as two points of access.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Would this actually affect Mr. Ford's taxes? Would he then become paying city Springfield taxes also?
His, his property's not being annexed, is it?
That's what I was going to ask. Dave, just to confirm that, his property's not being annexed, correct?
Correct. The only property that is being annexed is this highlighted property. The city limits, the city limits follows this line right here. And so the only property that we are annexing is this 92.14 acres. We sent letters to these three parcel owners to see if they were interested in being annexed, but none of them were. So there will be a little, what we call in the industry a donut hole. There'll be three parcels that will be surrounded on all sides by the city of Springfield but are not in the city. So, no, Mr. Ford's property will not be annexed. We're only talking about annexing Dr. Kumar's property and the right-of-way of 430, oh, 431 and some of Tom Austin Highway.
All right. Any other questions?
And there is a willingness on?
I'm going to talk with him just right now. I know you don't know anything about my history, but I've sat in public office, too. And generally, if I'm designing a plan, I'm trying to do it not to just the benefit of my client, but also to the benefit of the community. And so that's why we try to play, you know, make points of access, extend utilities, create open space that can be enjoyed by everybody. And so if there's something that I can do to accommodate him, I'm going to do it. It's just what I would do. And I did notice one thing, and he may not have any desire to do anything on his property in the future, but in the, in the event that he does, so I've got two points of access here and here. This property's here. There's a roadway here. I mean, I could stub a connection there if you, if you wanted in the future. It would be something that would be easy to do, provide future connectivity. He may not want that, but it's something that might not be a bad idea. But I'll leave that to your wisdom, to the planning director's wisdom. I will sit and I'll talk to him. I'll report my findings back to your planning director just so he'll know what we talked about. And, and it's a good plan, and I hope you, are you, are, are we approving this tonight? Or we're making a recommendation tonight? Is that what we're doing? I think so. So I hope you, I hope you'll do that. All right. I appreciate it, guys. Do you have any other questions?
I don't hear any. All right. All right. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Bob. The PUD itself, would you go over the PUD requirement? I know this is a PUD in and of itself.
It is, yes, sir. It is the, it is a planned unit development. The PUD designation, the reason that they want the PUD designation is so that they can reach the mixed-use component. PUDs are calculated on the gross area per unit where subdivisions are not. But if this was zoned R7, they, there may be 50 to 80 more dwelling units on the PUD than there would be on a, just an R7 zoning classification because of the, of, of the way it's zoned. Maybe 100. I'd have to look. But, you know, it, it's, even if they didn't, if you don't do the PUD overlay and it stays with R7, you know, R7 is our, is our most dense subdivision zoning classification, you know. And so we're, at, at the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting in June the 15th, we will be having a public hearing on the annexation, on the zoning to an R7 with a, with a PUD overlay on that annexation. If, if this commission moves this forward, there will be another public hearing at the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting concerning the planned unit development as well. And there will also be a resolution for concurrence and approval of the, of this commission's decision as well. So...
The second hearing on the, at Mayor and Alderman meeting for the annexation is this next meeting, right?
You're right. The second reading will be June the 15th, and then there'll be a public hearing there for that. And then there'll be a public hearing for this preliminary PUD master plan as well. I think we got several public hearings listed on the agenda for that month, for this month.
All right. And the main thing is, the final plat could potentially look significantly different based upon topography, based upon drainage, based upon issues that, because I know we don't have soils issue because it's going to be sued, correct?
Correct.
But stormwater could have a major impact on configuration. So this is not necessarily, it may lose 20 lots.
It could very easily lose 20 dwelling units or, or more. It, it will be very close to this. The roads will probably be laid out very close to this. The way the lots break out.
And is the roundabout, that's the?
And I apologize for that.
Parts, pieces and parts. Is it on that second street?
It was right here.
Right.
And I apologize that that didn't get in. But it, there is a roundabout there.
And there is a temporary cul-de-sac on both of those two dead-end streets now?
Well, just on this one. That was where you suggested.
Right.
By the bill, by the fire code, there's not 100, more than 150 feet here.
Right.
So, but, you know, for a planned unit development, having, you know, a clubhouse, walking trails, open spaces, on-site, property management, which is something that we have, they have never offered in, in planned unit developments before in Springfield, it has, it has a good potential, very good potential to be an excellent addition to the city of Springfield, grow our population and utility base as well as our tax base.
I would just, I would strongly encourage the developers to discuss with the adjoining property owner, the potential of allowing a temporary on both sides as opposed to just one. Anything backing up like a large fire truck, even though it's 150 feet, there's still potential there rather than a turnaround, swing around.
Okay.
Since, since the, since the road is going to benefit the adjoining property owner at some point in the future.
Right.
And the temporary could easily be done.
Yes, sir.
If the adjoining property owner so chose.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I have one. I may have missed this. What type of material in, are these, depending on what the house is, or the apartment, or the cottage, as the building material on this, these houses?
Well, Tim Paulston from Bowling Green, Kentucky. The apartments are brick and hardy. Right down the street here in White House, Tennessee. We just finished one last year called Twin Springs right off 31W. You're basically looking at the exact same building as those that are brick and hardy. Houses, it's called FRP smart siding. It's a lot like hardy, it's just made out of a little different material. It's a really nice material in the houses. That's what we're, when we're projecting hardy, or smart siding, or brick. So it, it's a, it's a good outside look. It'll produce some combinations of brick and hardy, brick and smart siding. So, so it's, it's, the whole key here is to make this thing blend, not to have one type of material over here and another whole type of material over here. That, that just doesn't give this the look we want. It wants to blend. We want it all blending. You'll have a little bit of different colors in the materials, but it's all the same materials. Even in the apartments, the cottages, the houses, same material.
David, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could this development potentially make Mr. Ford's property worth more money?
It has that potential, yes, sir. Down the road, it could very well be so, you know, property, presently, property values are going up at a very fast rate in percentage in Robertson County and Springfield. There is a much large, presently, there is a much larger demand for living units than there are living units available. We have a deficit of buildable lots in the city of Springfield. There are more inquiries looking for lots than there are lots available. So it, Mr. Ford's property has the availability to increase in value over time due to somebody wanting to purchase it and develop it. And he would, his property is, pieces of, part of his property, I believe, are within our urban growth boundary.
Mr. Ford, you asked if this is, is a done deal? It's not a done deal at this level. At the Mayor and Alderman meeting, this next meeting, there'll be a public hearing there. And that's more of a done deal thing than...
Well, if they approve it.
We give recommendations.
If they approve it.
Right.
Yeah. But until it's approved, it's not a done deal, Mr. Ford.
So what do I have to ask, please?
I would ask questions to David or the developer.
Yes. You know, the pub, the, the notice that we sent out gave you, gave our telephone number. We can hook you up with, we can get you in touch with Mr. Roy Dale. He'd, he would be glad to get with you and answer your questions right after this item is on the agenda. We would be glad to facilitate any meeting with you and the owners and the developer that you would need to answer all of your questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else? I don't see or hear anything. Is there a motion on this item?
Some motion.
Is that a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion on the second. Are you ready to vote?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Feig?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
No.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight points.
All right. Item 6.2, Green Hills Performance Surety. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Someone?
I heard a, a motion with the second. Second, okay. It does, we got the second.
Mr. Allen, if you'll give us a moment, as they move out, we will close that door in case the, the discussion gets a little above our comfort level.
He's going to take care of that.
Uh, Green Hills. Green Hills has a performance surety in front of you. It is for... It is for, let's see... $72,242 to ensure the remaining infrastructure on the Green Hills planned unit development on O'Keeney School Road is complete for its final phase of build-out. Mr. Reyes of Reyes Construction has purchased that. They've done quite a bit of infrastructure work, obviously. They only have a surety amount of 70, close to $73,000. We would recommend approval of that surety amount, after which we can record that plat and they can begin getting building permits in that final phase.
Got a motion, is there a second? Any other discussion? We're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Item 6.3 is the Village Square Performance Surety Bond. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
No move.
No second. Motion on the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, we discussed this last week, not last week, but last month at our last meeting. This is Ross Fans and Sons Development, JRF, at the corner of Golf Club and Rose Street. This bond is in the amount of $27,032, or $732, and it is for stormwater infrastructure improvements only. They're going to do the rest as, before they move forward. They have not yet bought the property, as we discussed at the last meeting, but they're in the process of buying the property from Ms. Haynes Estate. Once they get that done, they will get a updated plat to us with their name, title block, owner block, project name, as we discussed at the last meeting. We, staff has reviewed and looked at their HOA and their charter. We were good with those. They will, when, after the acceptance of the bond, after they get that plat to us, we'll get it signed by all the department heads. I'll sign it last, and we will move, and then the attorney for Mr. Fans entity will come get it, go record that plat, all the legal instruments for the charter and the HOA, and then bring it back, copies of all of that to us for our records. And so, once again, we recommend approval and acceptance of this surety.
Any questions?
Motion.
I make a motion.
Just a better motion, on a second.
On a second.
Okay. We have a motion on a second. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Item 6.4 is the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for transient habitation. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier in the evening, we rezoned a piece of property concerning a hotel. We have discovered during that process that our zoning ordinance is lacking in regulations that those types of developments add value to the city of Springfield. And so, we want to make sure that we get more stringent regulations in our zoning ordinance to ensure value being added to the city of Springfield. To do that, to enhance the transient habitation requirements, we actually have to amend four chapters, Chapters 2, Chapter 3, Chapter 6, and Chapter 13. I handed out the ordinance to you earlier this evening. The, you know, Exhibit A describes all the, that we're doing. The First Amendment, we're actually defining what hotels, motels are, extended stay hotel motel. That will be in Chapter 2. The Second Amendment, we are defining the use, which is the transient habitation use. We are adding, we're removing travel courts, and we're putting in extended stay hotel or motel. So, we've defined a hotel, we've defined a motel, we've defined an extended stay motel. That's what we're doing there. And we're defining what transient habitation is as a use because when we start amending Chapter 6, we add it as a principal use in some of our, our commercial zoning. So, we add, we've redefined what transient habitation is in the core commercial district. Transient habitation in the core commercial district will only be hotels and motels. We go to multi-residential, once again, within a principal permitted commercial activity, we define what transient habitation is. It's only a hotel and a motel that's permitted by right. We go to CS, we're going to add it by right, a commercial activity by right. Once again, defining transient habitation as hotel and motel. And then we're going to put transient habitation as a conditional use in CS as well for extended stay hotels or motels. And that's, and so, if somebody came and wants to do an extended stay hotel or motel in the CS zone, it would have to come to the border zoning appeals, and that conditional use would have to be granted. When anybody applies for a conditional use, we always notify all the properties, surrounding property owners, we let them know what's going on. So, it's, it's not just by right. Extended hotel, extended stay hotels and motels are not by right. They are conditional use, and they are conditional use only in the CS zoning district. We're also going to amend within Chapter 6 our supplementary regulations that apply to all of our commercial districts. We're reformatting the existing things that are there, which is, A, the following supplementary regulation shall apply to all commercial districts. We're reformatting that, and we're adding, B, supplementary regulations applying to transient habitation. Hotels shall have a minimum of 55 rooms and shall provide all of the services and amenities as defined. Hotels shall not be rented to the same person for periods of time exceeding one month. Motels shall have a minimum of 100 rooms and should provide all the services and amenities as defined. Rooms shall be, not be rented to the same persons for a period of time exceeding one month. When we go back to the definitions, I want to make sure that you, as defined, you know, a hotel is an establishment providing transient lodging, which includes a 24-hour front desk attendant, food service, room service, laundry and/or dry cleaning service, meeting rooms, health club or swimming pool, guest services, may or may not include restaurants, but no in-room food preparation. Guest rooms must be accessible from an indoor corridor. Motel, an establishment providing transient lodging, which includes a 24-hour front desk attendant. Room service may or may not include restaurants, but no in-room food preparation, and in which the guest rooms are accessible from outdoor parking areas or walkways and are rented on a less-than-monthly basis. So, going back to that 20, that supplementary conditions, you know, it says, be as defined. But, you know, shall, rented for periods of time, not, and amenities as defined. So, I wanted you to be aware what we've decided, defined each one as, what we're expecting. So, we go, the Fourth Amendment, we have to go all the way to Chapter 13. This is enforcement and, and conditional uses. So, we describe the requirements for a conditional use for an extended stay hotel motel. And those, those, you know, shall not exceed three stories, have no more than 20 rooms per each acre of land. Such facility shall include a 24-hour daily attendant at the front desk. Each room must have daily housekeeping service. Guest rooms shall be limited to two persons per room. Each room shall have a minimum of 325 square feet per room. Maximum length of stay shall be one month. So, the extended stay hotels, you know, they may have living areas and a kitchenette. There could be in-room prepar, food preparation in an extended stay hotel. So, that really tightens up our transient habitation regulations. As a matter of fact, this is what Goodlettsville has. It's very close to what Hendersonville has. So, we are, we feel very confident this will, this definitely tightens things up from what we are, where we're at now. And, you know, and we can always have conversations if we want to increase those regulations for transient habitation. But for right now, I think this is a really good place to start. And I think these regulations will make sure that hotels, motels, and extended stay motels and hotels add value to our community in the future. And as you see, the last one that we talked about meets everything that we have asked for except 50 rooms, or 55 rooms, 50 rooms, 50 rooms. So, you know, they're very close, but...
Did you say there's a time limit on an extended stay? A month as well?
The maximum length of stay per guest room shall be one month.
On an extended stay?
On an extended stay. So, you know, theoretically, a gentleman flies in from...
So, they're basically no different, the other one?
Well, the state of course, you know, just, right. But if somebody gets a job in Springfield, and they go to an extended, they go to extended stay hotel that has a, you know, a weekly, monthly rate, or a weekly rate, you know, I've flown in to do work at Air Tech, I'm flying out Friday evening, but I'm going to fly back in Monday morning. So, I rented it a week, I come back, and I rent it another week. And now, the guy may have a, or the young lady, or the engineer, or whoever, the businessperson, they may have a contract where they actually spend more than a month here, but they're not, you know, in that particular example, they wouldn't be renting it more than a month. But, you know, it is, we're trying to get away from hotels and motels being apartments.
How is that, please?
Say again, please.
How is that enforced?
Well, it tells us what we do in the zoning ordinance. Chapter 13 gives us the availability to cite them to court and, and ask for fines. And we can also move forward, well, basically through the courts. We'll, we'll send letters asking them to come into compliance. If they don't, then we will move forward, taking them to court.
Do you see in the future doing anything, having any regulations involving Airbnb-type situations?
Well, that's a very, a very excellent question. We can regulate them to a certain degree, but we cannot prohibit them from doing so. One of the things that we can do is require, to my knowledge, is require a registry, and we can actually do a tax. But we haven't done that yet. I don't know that that's a real issue. If it is, please let us know, and we will investigate it further on how to best handle those situations.
I appreciate the way that y'all are trying to be sure that the things that come to Springfield are things that's going to make Springfield better. We want to grow, but everything that comes up may not be a good fit for Springfield. So, if you continue to bring good, positive feedback to us, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We will try to do our best to bring as positive feedback as we can, Mr. Greg. So, staff recommends that this be the change, should, recommend this ordinance for transient habitation be forwarded and recommended onto the Board of Mayor and Alderman unless you, as a commission, have issues with what we're trying to do. Or if you would like, you know, us to add more to it.
Motion to approve. Second. Oh. That was quick. We have a motion to approve in a second. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Bev?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes nine to one, nine to zero.
Well, David has been busy. Item 6.5 is another order, ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the zoning ordinance for MRO bulk regulation. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
No move. Second.
Okay. Bobby Blasey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had discussions in the past concerning MRO zoning, multi-residential and office zoning, and how we seem to have a lot of developers come to our community who want to do multi-residential development, but none of the O, none of the commercial. Things I want to point out, though, in our zoning ordinance in Chapter 8, we already have requirements for building spacings. We have development standards for multi-family dwellings that require open spaces, require playgrounds on an apartment complex. The development standards for attached dwellings, townhouses, very specifically talks to what you can and cannot do with a townhouse, multi-residential development. Multi-story buildings in the MRO, some of those, more than two stories, you go to three stories, you add 10 feet to all the side yard setbacks and side yard areas. So, they go up 30 feet, goes to 40 feet, things of that nature. Landscaping requirements, our landscaping requirements are pretty stringent. So, if, as we enforce all of these sections on submittals, you're, you're, they're not going to get the maximum densities if, if, when we apply these properly, for townhomes anyway. Townhomes are not going to be the most efficient way to get maximum dwelling units in an MRO. Okay. With that said, what we're recommending, and it's Exhibit A, is that we're recommending that you actually encourage commercial development within the MRO. that you actually encourage commercial development within the MRO. Maximum lot, maximum lot coverage with, with commercial development area, 60 percent. Maximum lot coverage without a commercial development area, 40 percent. And we've gone and defined the commercial area as the commercial building and the parking area. Okay? Not just the building, but it's, it's the commercial area. So, there will be a building and adequate parking for that commercial development. And so, if you do commercial development, you get a maximum height of 70 feet, you know, five, six stories. If you don't do commercial development, you get 35 feet, basic townhome heat eve height, two stories. If you, minimum setbacks, 30 feet, you go up, that's that 811 that we talked about just a little bit earlier, more stories you go above two, the, you know, farther away from the property lines, the setbacks get. Okay? If you choose to do commercial development area, and it's gonna cover 12 percent of the gross area, which is 20 percent of the maximum coverage area, 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Okay? If you choose not to do commercial development, 7,000 square feet per dwelling unit. This lot coverage, this building height, this number is the same as our R7 residential zoning district. Okay? So, we're, we're, if you don't wanna do commercial, you know, you're, we're cutting you in half. You can do multi-residential, but you can only do half of what our current ordinance allows. So, this is, this is our present regulations right here. On an acre, you get 60 percent coverage, you got 14 and a half, you know, at 3,000 square foot density. Goes up, you know, 20 acres, 290. 25, 363. I mean, those are some pretty high densities. That's no commercial development. They can come in and do that by our ordinance. We encourage commercial development, but not necessarily need, they don't necessarily heed our request. You know, I believe that the MRO is in there for us to build some kind of little communities and provide some amenities for the community, you know, a convenience commercial store, possible barber shop, possible beauty salon, a mating, mating tree, you know, those types of things that are allowed in there. Doctors, lawyers, accountants, they're allowed in there as well. So, so, proposed with no commercial, as you can see, four tenths of an acre, we literally cut it more than half, six per acre. 336 at 25, 155 at 157, I mean, at 25, 155, 57. So...
And that mirrors the R7?
That mirrors the R7. Technically, because this is all calculated, calculated on the gross, in an R7, you would probably only be able to develop a maximum of 80 percent of the property unless you remove roads and storm drainage and do that kind of thing. But this type of development, you know, all of the, it's all privately owned, we don't get any of that, so it's all calculated that way. Now, the storm water management is a big part. Landscaping is a big part. You know, if you've got 20 acres of heavily wooded area and you've got a bunch of trees that are on it, 18 inches or larger, by our ordinance, every tree that you take out of it, we encourage you to keep the heritage trees, anything 24 inches and larger. But if, you know, you can, you get to replace an 18-inch tree with nine inches of trees, you know, three, three-inch caliber trees. And if you've got several, you've got 100 that you gotta replace, you know, there's a lot of trees that gotta be put back and figured out within a landscaping plan. You know, our objective, not just our objective, the board's objective is, you know, we want Springfield to be attractive. We want our developments to be attractive. Attractive developments make Springfield more attractive. The more attractive we make Springfield, the more attractive developments we get. You know, we want Springfield to grow. We want to sell utilities. We want to have a nice taxable tax base. We want rooftops. Retailers want to see our demographic increase so that we can get more commercial retailers, so that we can get more restaurants. We're really very close to seeing a lot of retail come into Springfield if we can get some really nice developments, get some nice rooftops, get our demographic of homeownership. You know, that's the board presses homeownership. That's, that's a very crucial demographic to a lot of retailers. So, we're close. But this would help ensure that we have high-quality, high-quality development, attractive, high-quality development. If, going in our last table, maximum coverage, if you do commercial, in an acre, you would be 10, 10, 10 units as opposed to 14, you know, you lost about a, you know, a little less than a third. You, you know, the areas that you would require, you know, in a 20-acre multi-res, in a 20-acre MRO zoned parcel, you would expect to see 104 acres, I mean, 104 and a half, 104,500 square feet of commercial area, which would encompass the building and the parking. So, you know, we've looked at one right now. They're proposing about 6 percent. It's pretty nice. It's got 8,000 square foot building and appropriate parking, 20 square, 20 acres. They have 16,000 square feet requirement. Well, I won't say that, but, you know, be 55,000 square feet of commercial, 55,000 square feet of commercial area, be close to 16,000 square feet of commercial space. With, you know, we hope that the desire is, is that they provide commercial that is more tailored to the, the units that they're trying to put in there as well. And of course, we urge them to sell those units, 'cause homeownership is key to our demographic in Springfield. So, as you see, those, you know, so, with 4,000, you know, in a 20-acre, you'd get 217 units, you'd have 104,500 square feet of off, of commercial space. And the residential would cover 418,000 square feet, which would be, you know, 80 percent of the allowable coverage. I know I talk in allowable coverages percentages and gross percentages, and Dustin's just smiling and laughing at me, but if y'all have any questions, you know where I'm at. I'll be glad to answer any question that you have later or right now. So, is there, and that's, that's all I got on that. So, you know, our concern is, is that we wanna add value to multi-residential development. We think the way to do that is to either limit multi-residential development or encourage commercial development with the multi-residential. We hope that you concur as well. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them to the best of my ability.
Chief, can we do a 70-foot building with no problem?
It looks like maybe, based on that the MRO zone is a certain degree, the ordinance keeps people from getting a R7. It allows them to get more lot as opposed to the R7.
You're correct, and...
I think it's a, I think it's a no-brainer, and I appreciate, appreciate y'all bringing it, because I think it makes good sense.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
It does increase the, it does definitely, it will increase the aesthetic value and the availability of the commercial services in a multi-residential area. It's a no-brainer.
Thank you. Obviously, staff recommends this.
Motion to approve. There's a second.
Mr. Gray.
All right, we're ready.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Tackin?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
That's a non-zero.
All right, the last thing on our agenda is the agenda for the BZI meeting on June the 8th. You wanna go over that, Gina?
I have three items on the agenda. Basically, they're all the same, but they're right down the street, parcels from each other on 12th Avenue. Harvey Combs is requesting two 4-foot variances from 10-foot side setbacks to allow for single-family residences to be constructed at 200, 12th Avenue, 202, 12th Avenue, and 204, 12th Avenue.
These parcels are ZONCC. They were part of the grand CC rezoning we did a couple of years ago, pushing that CG back. You can do single-family residential homes in CC. You have two options, either a 10-foot side yard setback or no setbacks, covering 75 percent of the lot. Their goal is to do a single-family home. The lots are, I wouldn't even say that in the CC zoning, they're not, they're not non-conforming, but they would like to be able to build a slightly bigger home. That, with the six feet either side, it would be 12 foot between the dwellings, which falls within the fire code minimum of 10 feet. So, just wanna make y'all aware of that. Y'all have any preference one way or another on that?
Whatever's best for Springfield.
We will move forward with those variances. Before we get out of here, Mr. Chairman, I have two things I wanna talk to you about. Quickly, two, three months back, we talked about PUDs. We talked about the requirements to cancel a PUD overlay. I just wanted to inform you that I'm going to send letters out and have on the agenda for July, five parcels to cancel the planned unit development overlay. Reason I tell you that, there will be a person that gives each and every one of you a call, or will try to, when we, we talk about canceling that planned unit development overlay. At least, that's my opinion. I, you know, I may be wrong. The second thing is, is the first Friday night market, first one in a long time, is tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. I hope each and every one of you will come out and say hi to each other and list, are you playing?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and Mr. Poole's playing, so come, come and cheer him on, get his autograph.
There will be something happen up there that night that has never happened before in this city, and you gotta come and see what it is.
Okay.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be crazy.
What a teaser, exactly. So, you know, there'll be food trucks, there's vendors, there's fun for all ages. So, we look forward to you coming out and supporting the historic event coordinators. And, Mr. Chairman, once again, we appreciate, thank you for your service to the city of Springfield. We know that it's, the pace not great, but we appreciate your service and your leisure to adjourn or not adjourn.
Could I, it's in the mail. Chair, I have one thing I wanna ask or just comment briefly. I'm a visual kind of a person and as popular and as easy as things like Google Maps or Google Earth. If there's ever a way we could have an overlay of, you know, ask a developer if they could throw their plat on, 'cause if you look at what we're talking about with the PUD, you know, Mr. Ford's property backs right, his house backs right up to the property line.
Yes, sir.
And I'd say it may be legal from a county standpoint, but he's right about, it looks like about 25 or 30 feet back of his carport to through the other property. So, if we could see for sure how that would fall on a, exactly on something like that, rather than just a plat.
Yes, sir.
It would be great if we could get that from, just from a visual standpoint, to be able to see that.
Yes, sir.
And then, the other thing, the gentleman who spoke secondly tonight against that request lives in Oakland Farm.
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't know whether, and he was complaining about a development, which is basically the same thing that he lives in.
Correct.
I was concerned about Mr. Ford's property too, but when the developer said it's gonna be a slope, so he, they probably never even see that, so...
But we, yeah, we normally try to do the overlays. We, we, we've got several targets that we're trying to hit, and we fell short on that one, but we'll try to do better, Mr. Bibb.
In this particular case, Mr. Ford's got a beautiful place, from what I can tell by looking at it on the map, on Google Maps. He chose to build his, his residence right up against the back of his property line, never knowing what could potentially happen to his adjoining property.
Yes, sir.
You know, those type things that every individual needs to consider when they start looking where they're gonna build their home.
Yes, sir. We will concur with that.
Okay, all right. Very quickly, I'll, first, I wanna thank you all for your confidence in day and night and policy to staff, and we bring so many of you all, hopefully, you know, to this good bed. We appreciate your questions and so appreciate what you do. You all knew tonight was one of those important nights, and we really, really appreciate what you're doing. Anecdotally, I will add that in response to the question about Mr. Ford's property, I grew up right there, so I grew up between Mr. Ford and Dr. Kumar. And I'm glad Dr. Kumar, I used to trespass on his farm and play on it, so I'm growing up. But, so, my grandmother lives, still lives right there, she's already got calls about people about her property. So, that is going to very much increase the value of folks' property around there. I was gonna point that out, because I was there with Mr. Ford, he did, he has a very beautiful place, tree-lined driveway, but he did build his house on the back of that property. He's a very good man, but that's, that's what he chose to do. That's all I, thank you.
I just, I just don't wanna see him having to deal with a lot of dust when the construction starts and things, but y'all will be on top of that when, if and when building starts.
We do our best.
We do, of course.
Yeah. We do. We, we expect water trucks, dust control.
Stabilizing the areas you can have, like the whole site cannot be all open to construction.
Yes.
That is not...
You know, as, as big as this site is, if they, you can get a maximum of 40 acres grading permit through the state of Tennessee, after you get over an acre, you actually have not only get a grading permit, land disturbance permit from the city of Springfield, you have to get one from the state of Tennessee, it's called a construction general permit, and you have to have a storm water prevention plan in place. They, you've got to sit very carefully certify to the state that you're not going to add to the issues of an existing waterway, that Cars Creek area right there. So, it's, you know, and Clayton and I, and y'all may not be aware... So, it's, you know, and Clayton and I, and y'all may not be aware of this, before the pandemic, TDEX inspectors, stormwater people, they come up to Springfield for lunch on Friday, to Depot, and come out and go out and look at every one of their permitted areas. So, I'm hoping that they start coming back and eating lunch, 'cause it'll help us out tremendously, making sure that we keep the waters of the state in good shape as well.
All right, is there anything else? I don't see anything. We'll stand the draw.
Thank y'all. Have a good weekend. Go see Buzzzy.
Come up on the square tomorrow night, you gonna see something funny.